Recording in progress.
I'd like to call the May 23, 2022, regular meeting of Shoreline City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Scully.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Ramsdale.
Present.
Councilmember Mark.
Present.
Councilmember McConnell. Here. Councilmember Poby.
Here.
And Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Are there any suggested changes to the agenda? Councilmember Roberts.
I think you'd like to pull seven I off the consent calendar.
All right, item seven I will be pulled from the consent calendar and made action item eight A.
Thank you.
Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Ms. Terry? No, okay, all right. Any other requested changes to the agenda? All right, seeing no objections, the agenda will be adopted as proposed. Next item is reported to the city manager. Ms. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Interim Shoreline Police Chief Ryan Abbott invites you to join him and Captain Kelly Park for coffee at Cafe Aroma on Wednesday, May 25th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It is an opportunity for you to meet Shoreline Police Officers in an informal setting, ask questions, express concerns, and build relationships. If you can't make this event, we plan on holding more coffees with the chief at different locations throughout the year. Stop by, grab some coffee, and talk to the chief. And the location for Cafe Aroma is 509 Northeast 165th Street. Beginning May 29th, you can explore the fascinating world of marine beaches during low tide with volunteer beach naturalists in these fun, free, and informative beach explorations at Richmond Beach Saltwater Park. You can dress for the weather. Waterproof footwear is recommended. And you can get the dates and times and more information at shorelinewa.gov/low tide. Now, in a new location, the Shoreline Farmers Market returns for its 11th season. The market will be located at the Shoreline Park and Ride at North 192nd Street and Aurora Avenue North every Saturday from June 4th to October 1st. And they'll be there from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The market offers a variety of fresh Washington produce and organic meats and showcases local farms, artisans, and musicians. Shop for local produce, fresh berries, artisan crafts, and an array of tempting treats. EBT and SNAP cards are accepted. Many vendors accept WIC and Senior FMNP checks. The popular Pop Club is back introducing kids to eating seasonally and the magic of produce. You can visit shorelinefarmersmarket.org for all the details. And join volunteer walk leader Donna for a Shoreline Walks event through the Innes-Arden Neighborhood and Boeing Creek Park area on Saturday, June 4th at 10:00 a.m. The Shoreline Walks program is free and designed for adults ages 50-plus, but open to all ages and abilities. No need to sign up, just show up at Sunset School Park on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And you can learn more at shorelinewa.gov/shorelinewalks. And on June 9th, the City Council will host the State of the City Breakfast, and community members and civic and business leaders are invited to attend. This event will be an opportunity to celebrate the city's accomplishments and look forward to the future. The event is free, but space is limited, so RSVP to Heidi Costello at 206-801-2214. And just a few public reminders, the park's Recreation Cultural Services/Tree Board will hold a remote meeting on Thursday, May 26th at 7:00 p.m. And the Planning Commission meeting originally scheduled for June 2nd has been canceled. In honor of Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed on Monday, May 30th. There will be no council meeting. And the next council meeting will be held on Monday, June 6th. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Next up is council reports. Are there any council reports? Councilmember Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few reports councils or reports to provide. On May 11th, I attended the Shoreline Rotary Club breakfast meeting. And at the meeting, Executive Director Kathleen Hosfeld with the Homestead Community Land Trust provided a PowerPoint presentation on their program. I walked away very impressed with the program. The it's the trust provides affordable homeownership opportunities for families earning 50% to 80% of AMI. Couple of things that really stood out was the trust owns the land and the buyers purchased the structure. So it provides an opportunity for to purchase homes between the price range between $224,000 and $378,000. This frees families from the worry of displacement as renters. The homeowner can use the equity built to purchase a market rate home in the future. So far, the land trust has created opportunities, created homes for 235 homes that are currently listed in the trust. And what's impressive is that 57% are owned by BIPOC families and a foreclosure rate of less than 1%. On the 14th of May, I attended the Westminster Triangle Neighborhood Leadership Group meeting. At that meeting, they elected two new co-chairs, Nathan Hawkins and Michelle Moyes. They are planning, during the meeting, they planned for the Night Out Against Crime. And also, there's much interest in the development of the park, especially with the recent influx of young families with children who've moved into the neighborhood. On June 25th, the neighborhood will be hosting a meeting with Park Fleets and Facilities Manager, Nicholas Borer, to start a conversation about the park. On the 16th of May, I attended a meeting with folks, the staff and board members with the North Urban Human Services Alliance. And their primary concern during our conversation was their concern about the future of the Oaks Enhanced Shelter. The current contract ends in the middle of 2023. And they are having a little bit of frustration finding out information from Catholic Community Services about what the status of the enhanced shelter will be. I will be meeting with Will Toastburn from Solid Ground and Katie Wilson from Transit Riders Union on June 6th as a follow-up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And please keep us posted on those meetings. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a brief update on the Regional Transit Committee that took place on May 18th. Quickly, year-over-year ridership on Metro, April to April, is up 20% from last year, so things are returning. You have heard it before, but the new ORCA program launched on May 16th. There have been a few hiccups. If anyone out there is experiencing hiccups with their ORCA card, remember, you don't need to get a new one. It was just transferred over. You can go to myorca.com and get some help with that. And then the primary, oh, also upcoming, it's not implemented yet, but we are going to be talking about a proposal to reduce youth fares on Metro to zero. Stay tuned for more information about that. And the main purpose of the meeting was to discuss the Metro Connects Implementation Report, which looks at the cost to implement Metro Connects as a regional plan. Sorry, I guess a King County plan. And the funding gaps, funding sources, and engagement strategies they will have moving forward with it. It's obviously very long and comprehensive. And if anybody would like us to make that available to them, we can certainly do that. But good meeting, things are progressing and coming back for Metro. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Zoom meeting for Domestic Violence Initiative a few weeks ago and want to tell you that it was very promising that that they found out what probably should not be a surprise that there are resources out there, but the access to them are broken because of the language barrier, cultural barrier, et cetera. And so the caucus met afterwards. And usually, when I think there's an opportunity for change, I get really excited and, you know, give them the, let's do whatever we can because domestic violence victims will file, you know, a complaint. But then they won't follow through to the other sequences of the legal system because they don't know how to. And there isn't really a real good follow-up. What we found out is that those people need to be legal. You know, they're not just advocates, they need to be attorneys. So we asked them to check up on people who are attorneys, but they're still in school, so it'll be a little cheaper. But their real function is to hold victims' hands so that they really follow through on their restraining orders, et cetera. Because this is, you know, a real big problem for women of any income level, but clearly, it's a more pressing problem for people of color because they don't know how to access the system like some of us might. So and then the second thing, which people haven't mentioned, but I was very happy to attend the Shorelake Arts Gala with almost everybody on this council. So shame on you for not patting yourself on the back. Last we heard, $60,000 and then some. And that was before everything was counted and before some of my bids came in after I left. So, you know, it was a great, I'm really so proud of a council that really comes out and shows up for the community. It was a little scary because I was probably one of the few people that regularly put my mask on and ate in short bursts and then put my mask on again because of family and health issues. But I still was excited that they finally had an in-person auction. So thank you again for, you know, and I got to have the superintendent with us. So I was pretty excited that she's so new that I think she's a little leery of, you know, going to these things on her own. And so with Ms. Terry's help, I met her a few weeks before that. So I just reached out to her and said, are you coming? If you are, come join us. So thank you all for showing up. And hopefully, we'll do it again next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there other council reports? Councilmember Mark.
I attended the Elected Officials K4C, the King County Climate Change Consortium Town Hall, which was led by Rod Dombowski. And the main topics were the addition of two new cities, Bothell and Maple Valley, to the consortium. And then we also discussed quite an at-length Vision Zero and the relationship between people feeling safe on the road, whether they're walking, biking, or driving, and, you know, the relationship with climate change to try to get people spending more times out of their cars. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other council reports? All right, well, I attended a meeting of the Lake Ballinger Forum, and we had an exciting presentation from Washdot, who is making the creek that leads up to Lake Ballinger salmon accessible. And that includes making a salmon-accessible passage under I-5, which is a pretty impressive tunneling project that they're going to do with a boring machine because there's not obviously a way to cut and cover on I-5. There are some concerns from our neighbors to the east about downstream flooding. I'm really hopeful that we can work those out because I am, you know, I obviously want to protect everyone in our region from, you know, impacts of flooding, but at the same time, salmon are having such a tough time. And whatever we can do to make life better for them, I think, is our obligation to do so. And on a similar note, I am delighted to announce that Representative Jaya Paul has included funding for our Ballinger Creek Potential Restoration Project, which would make that particular creek fish-passable up to Burgers Bog, part of her funding request to the White House. That's step one. We've got a lot of steps to go before we get that funding. And even that, once we get it, is only step one because that gets us a Corps of Engineers grant to come up with a plan to make that particular passage of the creek not only fish-passable, but environmentally friendly and with, you know, wetty debris in the stream and riparian cover next to it and all the rest. So I'm super excited about that. And any project that helps us put back the environment and maybe even make it better is something that I personally care very much about. And I hope those two things move forward. Any other council reports? All right. Next up is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address us on items on the agenda or items of concern. We have 19 people signed up tonight, so that limits us to two minutes per person. And it also puts us beyond the 30 minutes per member. Are there any, Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we suspend our council rules and allow all 19 individuals who signed up to speak to speak for two minutes apiece.
Is there a second? Councilmember Commerce seconds. Are there any objections to that motion? All right, seeing no objections, the motion passes unanimously, and all 19 people have two minutes to speak. We ask that each person address us first with their name and city of residence, and then please proceed for two minutes. Ms. Hardy, will you go ahead and administer the public commentary? I'm sorry, Ms. Simmelcheckman.
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker this evening is Richard Kink. And he will be with us in just one moment. Okay, Mr. Kink, go ahead when you're ready, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, all right, thank you. Today, I submitted public comment to the council about eminent domain action by the city of Seattle over a street end on Lake Washington. As a brief recap, in 2015, the city offered $400,000 under threat of eminent domain. In 2019, the city wins in court and pays the property owners $800,000. Couple of interesting points about this property. In the Seattle Times' August 2015 article, the tone of the city was an offer was a take it or you'll be lucky to get half. As the article points out, a nearby waterfront parcel was listed for only $119,000. Ultimately, Seattle paid twice their offer. With regards to parcel 0905, there are a lot of unknown variables that could dramatically affect the acquisition cost. Interestingly, the appraiser told the property owner that they had not physically viewed the parcel. While there are conflicting surveys on the land side of parcel 0905, there is no survey of 0905, and it accordingly needs to be surveyed to determine total uplands and tidelands. Also, there is an issue with a self-facing bulkhead that appears to be within parcel 0905. Within the Shoreline Master Program, single-family residences are preferred use, and their bulkheads are noted as necessary to protect the home and property. Additionally, there are public access regulations within the Shoreline Master Program that appear not to have been addressed regarding this parcel. Request, excuse me, respectfully, I request the council to table ordinance 967 and get the property owner's permission to do a proper survey of the parcel and from the survey negotiate with the parcel owner to resolve any bulkhead issues and an agreed value. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kink.
Our next speaker is Brian Chow.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you for your time. My name is Brian Chow, and I also live on 27th Avenue Northwest. I'm also calling to discuss my feelings about ordinance 967. You know, I understand the feeling behind it. I'm not opposed, per se, to the idea of public use of the beach as there are people who come down and use that beach already from time to time. However, I feel like there are a lot of issues that have yet to be really addressed in ordinance 967, as it's written. You know, I just kind of found out about this yesterday or just last week. And the fact that this process seems to be really speeding through from offer of purchase from the city to the current owner to the vote potentially in June, it's like almost just less than a month. And I feel like doing this without any sort of meaningful dialogue with the biggest stakeholders of this purchase, which is the people who live on my street, seems a little troubling to me. Again, you know, Rich kind of brought up the SMP. The SMP, as you know, is the Shoreline Master Program, which governs development of any property that's within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark, which this parcel falls under. These, there's a public access element within the SMP, and there's a few things that are written there that I don't think have been really addressed at all. Really, the biggest thing talks about how any sort of public access has to be made barrier-free for people with disabilities. Any access, any public access has to be connected directly to the nearest street. So the nearest street is either my street, which ends actually a private road before it hits the beach, or it's Richon Beach Drive in Northwest 195th Street. So there's going to be a lot of money that's going to be tied up making this public accessible as required by the SMP. And I'm just concerned that there hasn't been a real good survey of the costs that are going to be necessary to make this comply with regulations. I appreciate your time, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chow.
Next up is Jim McCurdy.
Good evening. I trust you can hear me?
Yes, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
I'm Jim McC-
We lost you, Mr. McCurdy. Is it possible you muted?
That was my fault. Let me get him back real quick. Sorry about that.
No worries. And let's reset the time, too. Yeah, thanks.
Here we go. All right.
Mr. McCurdy, I apologize. Your time has restarted, and that was a technical error. I apologize. Please start from the beginning.
Jim McCurdy, I also live on Apple Tree Lane, otherwise known as 27th Avenue. I recently had the pleasure of serving the city on the Financial Sustainability Advisory Committee, under which we review the city's finances and budgets and made recommendations regarding the placement of levy on the fall ballot. During this process, I have found working with the city to be collaborative, inclusive, and transparent. It's been a pleasure to work on that committee. What I'm now seeing as it pertains to the beach property south of us is not collaborative, inclusive, or transparent. It seems like a land grab without due process. Main question that many of us are asking ourselves is have all parties been consulted and brought into the discussion? Neighbors, Fire Department for Emergency Access, police, because there are issues in the summer, particularly with beach parties and so forth? What are the hours going to be for the park? Will it be patrolled? What about crossing BNSF private property to get there? Public access in terms of ADA access of the bulkhead at the end of the street? I think there's lots of questions. We basically just come to a conclusion that we'd like to ask you to delay any vote on this subject while we have a chance as a community to all discuss.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy.
Next up is Nathan Beard.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Beard, and I'm the president of the Richon Beach Preservation Association, which is the nonprofit representing the folks on 27th Avenue Northwest. And like the other folks mentioned, our street leads to the beach that ordinance 967 would condemn. We urge the city to postpone any consideration of this ordinance. While we appreciate the goal of expanding parklands, the city should not vote on acquiring this particular beach until it actually puts together a plan, engages the community, weighs the costs and benefits, and addresses the variety of issues that'll arise if this beach is converted to a city park. The ordinance distills obtaining the beach a simple matter of the city spending $110,000 out of its general fund. But this vastly underestimates the amount of money it'll take to condemn, litigate, and compensate the owner for the property. But more importantly, it ignores the issues that come with acquiring the beach. For one, the ordinance does nothing to address access. Unless the tide is out, there is no public access to the beach. Our street's a single-lane road. The 600 feet leading to the beach is privately owned. There's no turnaround. There's no parking. There's scarce room for emergency vehicles. The city declined to purchase this beach two years ago because of these issues, and nothing's changed since then. The recent move to condemn this property's been made without input from the stakeholders that are most effective, affected, those that live in the area. The day this agenda item was announced, we submitted a public records request. Just today, I was told not to expect to receive a full response until August 16th. That alone should be reason to postpone the June 6th vote. Many comments offered by folks in writing show that beach owners have permitted people to access this beach for recreation for decades. So there's no reason for the city to upset the status quo before it engages stakeholders, addresses the issues related to condemning the beach. And it's for these reasons we respectfully request the city postpone further consideration of ordinance 967.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
Next is David Barnett.
Mayor Scully, Deputy Mayor Robertson, and members of the Shoreline City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hey Barnett, I have been a resident of the Shoreline Neighborhood under threat for over 18 years. I'm also the chairman of the Calhoun Indian Tribe. It is in that context I address you today. Tom McCormick's scheme for stealing my neighbor's land is a wolf in sheep's clothing. Claiming a public purpose to pilfer from our community members is no different than the robber land barons, who changed legal descriptions of land, threatened, extorted, or even murdered my people and forced them off their lands, and then exploited their ill-gotten gains for selfish purposes. The nefarious abuse of government authority embedded in the plan before you is nothing new. My people were forced off 4 million acres of land at gunpoint as the Army carried out official government directives. Using government as a shill for inappropriate private interests is today as it was then fundamentally corrupt. We won't be fooled or forced away this time. I purchased my family's home on the beach in front of it at a premium because I swore it, why? Because I swore to my ancestors I would never again allow the colonizers to even try to take away my rights, to take away my land, or to disregard and dishonor my Aboriginal rights as a Native American. In striking contrast to the horrific abuses faced by my people and other indigenous peoples, with Peter's permission, numerous Native Americans respectfully used his beach parcel for traditional purposes with permission, including ceremonies, tribal canoe landings, and related pulturally significant practices. He strives to restore and grow their connections with the land already stolen from them. Please, let's not steal it again. The tribes enjoy sovereign immunity. Write those two words down. And the inherent rights to build and enjoy meaningful relationships with kind and generous people like Peter. Let's not impede or dishonor this imbalance by inappropriately and unwisely promoting self-interest under color of government authority. I'll do everything in my power to keep the property as is, to honor my people and their traditions, and end this cycle of abuse. Not squall us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Next is Sandra Gillette.
Thank you. This is Sandra Gillette. I live on Richmond Beach Drive, and I have lived here since 1971. So I'm probably one of the longest residents here now. My family and my neighbors and everybody has spent many an hour on the beaches. And I really am excited about the opportunity that you have as city council to explore this possibility of acquiring this piece of land which abuts the Saltwater Park. The boundary, the north boundary of the Saltwater Park is contiguous with this piece of property. This is an unmatched opportunity for you as council members to really acquire a beautiful piece of property for the city, for the shoreline, for the use of the people. For years, I have walked on 27th Northwest, which I fondly remember as Apple Tree Lane, both north and south, to get to the beaches. And now the north end is blocked off, and so people get to the beach a very unsafe way by going over two railroad tracks and down the rocks. And people will continue to access the beach unsafely unless you make sure that it's done safely. It's a liability issue for the city because you have this opportunity now. If you do not act on it, you're putting yourself in a liable position, possibly. So I support very strongly the city buying the beach parcel. It will be very nice when the city owns it. For one thing, they can have more jurisdiction over the use of it, as in illegal use by beach parties and setting fires and things. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Jack Malek.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead whenever you're ready, Mr. Malek.
Hi, my name is Jack Malek. I'm a 21-year resident of Richmond Beach. I live at 20224 23rd Place Northwest. I share Ms. Gillette's enthusiasm. I don't have her tenure, that's for sure. But it's been a lovely community, lovely place to live and raise a child. And, you know, until recently, I didn't even know that that stretch of beach didn't belong to the Park Service. I mean, I should say it was probably about five or six years ago that I learned of that as I was researching property in the area. And quite honestly, that land, I doubt many people would know that that is privately held land, that two acres. You know, and it was recently sold, along with the property, the home near there. I don't see, I don't see the benefit it affords that home. You can't build on it for residential or business. And the only real utility is recreation, which seems consistent with a park. And it's how people have used it, at least all 21 years I've lived here. It's in continuity and follows the natural contour of the tidelands and the existing beach. You know, the only safe way to get there is either through the Saltwater Park access or from within the neighborhood would be in continuity with the road, 27th Avenue. I think it's a safe- Um, I think it's the safest way to, to access and enjoy that beach. I think it's appropriate that the city purchases it. I'm in favor of, of the ordinance and of uh, this agenda item and I, I hope that you move forward with it. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Malek.
Next on the list is Tom Myatt. However, I don't see Mr. Myatt's in the list of attendees. It could be that he's one of our telephone attendees. Uh, Mr. Myatt, if you're there, can you please raise your hand by pressing star nine on the phone? Or using the hand in the Zoom application? There we go. Okay.
My name is Tom Myatt. I'm a resident of Richmond Beach. I'm commenting on Agenda Item 9C, a proposal to purchase the beach front parcel immediately north of Saltwater Park. My family's lived in Richmond Beach for the last 38 years. We have two sons who are now in their 30s. My family often walk to the beach using the access at either end of 27th Avenue Northwest, Apple Tree Lane, starting when our kids were old enough to walk. We recently walked to the beach using the south access with our granddaddy, so now it's a multi-generational tradition. In those 38 years, we almost always met others walking these access routes on our way to or from the beach. Beach access by pedestrians using 27th Avenue Northwest is currently a longstanding neighborhood practice, not something just my family has always done. There are multiple very good reasons for the city to purchase this parcel. It helps the city meet its own pros, plan, goal to acquire beach access. The city will never find another beach front parcel of this size at the lowest assessed price. It will remove any confusion about the location of the north boundary of Saltwater Park. For all these reasons, the city should purchase the parcel at the south end of 27th Avenue. To ensure that there is still neighborhood pedestrian access using 27th Avenue, the city should work with railroad to get a pedestrian easement on the portion of the road owned by the railroad. These two actions together will make sure neighborhood pedestrian beach access to Saltwater Park is preserved for future families. I also totally support prohibiting public parking at 27th Avenue Northwest. This access should be reserved for neighborhood walkers. Anyone who needs to drive to get to the beach should use the ample parking at Saltwater Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt.
Next is Tom McCormick.
Hello, council. I'm Tom McCormick, uh, if you're in Richmond Beach. If you pop down on the beach for the first time ever on a nice day and you just sit on a log or a rock, what are you gonna see? You're gonna see not an empty beach, you're gonna see lots of people on a nice day filling that space as they've been doing for decades. It's going to continue, no matter what council does. People are going to flock to that beach. You know, we heard that, what's changed since the last time the, the city looked at this acquisition issue? Well, 2020, COVID, and the unbelievable actions that the city and members of the association on 27th took to try to keep people out. Instead of encouraging people to be at the beach, people were kept out. Signs suddenly telling us we're trespassing, end of city road, multiple signs. But moreover, what's changed? Saltwater Park, I've discovered that now extends north to the south boundary of the beach property. So let's extend it all the way to a natural breaking point at the bulkhead. Are there issues to be worked out? Of course, there's always issues to be worked out. Somebody suggested doing a survey first? Of course, a survey is going to be done in the process. We're not going to acquire the property tomorrow after this ordinance is passed, and there'll be a title check. The title currently, or the deed currently says the owner owns the titlins. There's currently, there's uplands there too. Who owns those? These things are going to, of course, be addressed in the process. It was, someone said the biggest stakeholders are us on 27th. The people on 27th own 2.5% of the road. We're the stakeholders as well on the east side of the tracks needing to use that road for our safety. Safety cannot be put on a back burner. That is the huge reason why the council needs to take this action. We need to be able to access the beach safely.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Next is Randy Stein. Mr. Stein, I just asked you to unmute yourself.
There he goes. Name is Randy Stein, live on 27th Avenue. We, um, my wife and I have enjoyed this in, uh, for many years here. The, um, the question we have is how much is enough? Uh, they have a park to the north of us and we have a park to the south of us, the Saltwater Beach, within a half mile. Uh, when the city uses eminent domain, um, it's kind of a bullying process. You're taking private land, as several have said, and converting it to public use. With 34 present parks, how much is enough? And we're saying that this is definitely disputing, disrupting our living here in the area. There's, uh, some of the residents have the dogs walking forward. We haven't complained about the neighbors walking up and down the streets. Yes, signs have been put up for people who come down to visit. A lot of people drive past those signs, go down the end and try and turn around, which is no turnaround area. Um, so it's very inconvenient. Some of you ought to come here and just live here, just stay here, visit here. Uh, dog poop, uh, beer bottles, um, tin cans, uh, all kinds of garbage is left here by these people. A lot of them are nice and, and we appreciate the fact they pick up the poop, but, um, it's just, uh, it's inconvenient. When they park in our parking spaces in front of our house or in our, in our, in front of our garage, it's inconvenient. It's not necessary. And this is just going to encourage more. Over the years, the city has spent a lot of energy preventing, uh, trying to prevent Wells Point from adding new housing in the area. And, and this again is going to encourage, you know, down one street, more traffic, more, uh, involvement with other people. That's not fair. Um, we've paid for expensive, uh, private use here and we appreciate that. Thanks for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Next is David Spellman. Um, I do not see Mr. Spellman in our list of attendees. Um, Mr. Spellman signed up as the layer for Peter Vitaleano, and I do see Mr. Vitaleano in the list. Could you please raise your hand?
If, if Mr. Spellman is present, we're happy to hear from him. If Mr. Vitaleano is not signed up, we're not going to hear from him. All right, let's, let's, let's pass for now and we'll return at the end and make sure that Mr. Spellman is present, he can speak.
Okay, sounds good. Our next speaker is Forrest Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor Scully, Deputy Mayor Robertson, and members of the council. My name's Forrest Taylor. I live on Northwest 198th Street, right next to the beach entrance we're talking about. I support the city of Shoreline buying the beach parcel. I always thought that it was part of the park. It's not clear at all that it isn't. It should be. I walked down along that beachfront hundreds of times. I had no reason to think I was trespassing. There's nothing there. If that part of the beach is not allowed as an entrance, what are we supposed to do? The next closest entrance is walking up a hill for over a mile and then walking back down to the beach. That's not gonna happen. People aren't going to walk up and down a hill to go to a beach that's right there. We're just going to go by the closest route, and that's already what's been happening. No one's taking a walk to the beach and saying, hey, let's go a mile out of the way because maybe the railroad or somebody owns that part of the beach? No, people are already using the beach as part of the beach, so let's just make it official. Some people want to be, the beach to be a private property or a private road. There's mysterious things that need to be researched and investigated. We don't need an investigation. I've been there hundreds of times. Maybe they want to make people pay for the privilege of going the closest route to the beach, but people aren't going to pay to walk to the beach. They're just gonna walk to the beach, whether someone says it's private property or not. If you put up a gate, people are gonna walk around it, as well they should. Richmond Beach is for everyone, uh, and I say let's make it official and keep it that way. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Peterson.
Hello, this is Tom Peterson. I live at 1719 Northwest 192nd Street in Richmond Beach. Um, I've been enjoying the comments other people have been making and would say, yes, certainly, uh, the city council should meet with residents to study, uh, their concerns and allay any such concerns. I do support the city acquiring, uh, the beach for the park. Uh, I agree with many and have lived in Richmond Beach for 25-plus years that there would be little or negligible increase in foot traffic. Uh, just the usual locals, as they always have, uh, strolling through on their way to the beach on 27th. I do support prohibiting outside parking on 27th and, uh, better signage and strict enforcement so that it is still residence only. And, uh, I think the city should work with Burlington Northern Santa Fe on a dedicated pathway to the south end of the 27th Avenue, uh, beach access so that visitors are not disturbing residents or infringing on their rights. Similar to, uh, pathways and cut-throughs like the one between 15th Avenue Northwest and 198th Street. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Next is Theresa LaCroy. And Ms. LaCroy is joining us from the telephone.
Theresa LaCroy Edmonds, Director of Shoreline Lake Forest Park Senior Center. Joining you tonight on behalf of the staff, instructors, volunteers, 600-plus members, and the rest of the aging community of Shoreline to support council as you proclaim the month of May, Senior Month. We have been hosting many wonderful events all month, which will culminate June 11th with a large wellness fair that will be open to all in the community. I especially want to thank council members for the continued support, not only in the past two years, but at all times. Whenever we have been in need, you have been there. And each year, I find that we have a broader understanding of our partnership. We learn from you, what your expectation is of us. And I think you know, we do our best to try and meet that expectation. We look forward to 2022 and continued years in working alongside many employees of the city in various departments and servicing our aging community. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Curley. I do not see Ms. Curley in the list of attendees. Um, she emailed me previously saying she was having some audio issues. Um, Ms. Curley, if you're joining us on the phone, could you please press star six to unmute yourself?
All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Let's, let's move on and we'll return to both her and Mr. Spellman at the end.
Okay, so next is Bill Turner. And Mr. Turner, could you please raise your hand if you're in the list of attendees? Okay, actually, I see that he's on the telephone as well. Let me rename Mr. Turner and then allow him to talk. Okay, Mr. Turner, go ahead when you're ready.
Mr. Turner, if you can hear me, go ahead and speak. I don't see that the phone is muted, but I also don't see him on our list, in the symbol check smith, on the list of presenters. There we go. Mr. Turner, I apologize for the delay. Whenever you're ready, please unmute and speak.
You're unmuted, Mr. Turner. Go ahead.
Mr. Turner, if, if you can hear us, please go ahead and speak. I think, I think you should be unmuted at this point. All right, I hate to do this in the symbol check smith, but let's pass Mr. Turner to, and we'll return to the three we weren't able to connect with.
Sure. Mr. Turner had called me previously and said he was going to be joining under a different name in Zoom, and I also don't see that name, so. Um, yeah, we'll try again at the end. So next is Kathleen Russell.
Kathleen Russell, resident of Shoreline on behalf of Safe Shoreline Trees. Regarding 9B staffing request, it is understandable more developments lead to more permit activity. More developments also lead to increased questions from citizens and more public record requests. As residents who live here, we pay property taxes, license fees, city sales taxes, and therefore residents with questions should also receive an appropriate level of response. Question about statement in 9B, quote, "This trend is expected to continue over the next several years with current projects of 7,947 units to develop by 2025," end quote. This refers to current projects. Is it possible to get a location list of these projects? Regarding Richmond Beach, we continue to have questions about the 20th Avenue Northwest new sidewalk. The design is now eight feet wide along 20th Avenue Northwest from 190th to 193rd, and then 10 feet wide from 193rd to 195th. We ask for a continuous eight-foot-wide sidewalk. We are completing the survey, but we have questions that the design will be at 100% before we get answers. Can the city possibly set up a fact sheet to answer the questions as emailed to the project manager and council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Blackwell.
Hello, my name is Derek Blackwell. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Um, I live close by to the newly proposed apartment building on Linden Avenue North to replace Garden Park Apartments. Mill Creek Residential held a second community Zoom meeting on May 10th. Uh, this was not in good faith. Nobody schedules meetings at 8:00 PM unless they want to purposely minimize participation. At the start, we had almost 50 people. By the end, most dropped out. Some definitely couldn't make it. Uh, the first community meeting was poorly publicized. Clearly, Mill Creek wishes to minimize discussion. And is it coincidence that the announcement for Brea Apartments, also on Linden Avenue, one block away, came out just four days after this Mill Creek meeting? Here we have 386 units proposed, but at least there's vehicle access to both Linden and Aurora avenues. The Mill Creek proposed building does not. It is exceptional in that it is very ill-suited for the surroundings. Earlier, we made Mill Creek well aware of the safety issues. On May 10th, we were very arrogantly told they would have just one vehicle entrance because, uh, there would only be one conflict point with pedestrians, which would obviously be worse. Everyone waiting longer at that one point. Oh, and yes, we would have one more parking space on the street. Uh, but they're not giving rational reasons. They don't have to. Uh, they've already been assured all they have to do is meet code requirements and their application will be approved. Uh, lack of vehicle access came up several times in the meeting. Kate Lee stated she needed to defer to the Traffic Engineer for Traffic Problems. As I mentioned earlier, I had already spoken with Kendra Dindinsky, a very nice person, who made it very clear this is not a discussion she's going to get involved in. So, okay, who is? The city could prevent future safety problems by making a statement about it now before the application is submitted. Number one on the list is emergency vehicle response. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, and I see Mr. Spellman has joined, so if we can go to him next.
Yes, uh, Mr. Spellman, go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead whenever you're ready.
I am here on behalf of the property owner regarding Agenda Item 9C, which is the condemnation ordinance. I was retained in December by the property owner regarding an email by Mr. McCormick, who had proposed setting up a public trust. who had proposed setting up a public trust to acquire the property. That was in December. In May, the property owner learned for the first time about a proposal to condemn the property. Our position is the city should postpone the motion and conduct a proper, transparent, and inclusive process consistent with principles of equity and inclusion. The fact that the city's response to the neighborhood group's public records request says there will not be a response until August shows that the city's blitzkrieg in an attempt to condemn the property is ill-advised. This requires a process. The context is under a 1984 lawsuit. The original property owners, the Landon family, through a trust, had agreed to permissive public use of the property. That's the status quo. What's the reason to rush from that? There needs to be an analysis. With the recent plans of the City of Seattle to close Golden Gardens and Alki due to public safety concerns, one can understand why my client has concerns. Moreover, there are concerns about access. The city is changing its position. The position is expressed in city signage showing there is no public access to the beach and that there is public private road.
Thank you, Mr. Spellman. Has Ms. Curly or Mr. Turner joined?
I do not see Ms. Curly, and Mr. Turner's still on the call. We can give it a try again to see if it works this time.
Yeah, are there instructions you can give him? I'm not sure what the problem is.
So, Mr. Turner, I'm gonna press a little button that says "allow to talk," and then you press star six to unmute yourself.
Mr. Turner, can you hear us? Mr. Turner, it looks like you're activated. Could you go ahead and try speaking? All right, unfortunately, we're gonna need to move on. All right, Mr. Turner, you're welcome to submit comments in writing or to attend our next council. Mr. Turner, are you there? All right, unfortunately, it looks like this is not gonna work. We're gonna have to pass. All right, Ms. Semmelcheck Smith, I believe that closes public comment, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the consent calendar. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as amended, correct, from earlier?
Yeah, so Item 7I is no longer on the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Scully.
Aye.
Councilmember McConnell.
Aye.
Councilmember Povey.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Mark.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ramsdale.
Aye.
All right, the consent calendar passes unanimously, and the new action item 8A is the former 7I, which is adopting Resolution Number 491, repealing Resolution Number 459, which authorizes hybrid meetings.
City Attorney Margaret King was going to do a very brief presentation.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. King.
Can you hear me? I apologize. I was just trying to click my unmute when the screen popped up and I couldn't find it. My apologies.
No worries. You're here now. Go ahead.
Mayor, council, this is Resolution Number 491, repealing Resolution Number 459, temporarily authorizing meetings and public hearings to be held remotely due to COVID-19. Hey, I don't know why my screen is not working. I've... Let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay, oops, now it goes. Okay, so the legislative actions that we're addressing today in this discussion is Resolution Number 459. The council adopted it on June 1st, 2020. It suspends the City Council rules 5.3 and 5.5 that allowed us to go to virtual meetings. Those rules require there to be a meeting on-site of City Hall. It also directs the Planning Commission on the Park Board to hold meetings virtually. There's a typo. I apologize. It's a engrossed substitute House Bill 1329 was passed in 2022. It amends the Open Public Meetings Act to require a physical location. It does permit entirely virtual meetings, but it does so only when there is a declaration of emergency and the meeting can't be held in person with reasonable safety. And then the Governor's Proclamation 202816 is terminates and rescinds requirements of public meetings to be held virtually effective June 1st, 2020. The governor has taken that action. Why? There we go. So, we've also integrated new technology into the city system. It integrates cameras and microphones into a video conferencing platform. Staff presentations can be shared in council chambers and on the video conferencing platform. And it also allows public comment to be made by telephone or video conferencing software, or of course, in-person, to allow us to do these meetings. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 491, repealing Resolution 459, and return to in-person meetings effective June 1st, 2022. And I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. This is an action item, so we normally start with a motion. Is there a motion related to this item? Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 491, repealing Number 459.
And let's pause for a minute. Ms. Semmelcheck Smith, do you have a comment?
Mayor Scully, since this item was on action for the first time.
Yeah. And just so everyone knows, staff reminded me about that, and I just forgot, so I apologize. Before we do a motion, we need to open this up for public comment, because this is an action item that has been on the agenda for the first time. Without prior notice, we need to open it up for public comment. So if there are any members of the public in attendance, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will call on you to provide comment on this action item only. All right, I'm not seeing any hands. Ms. Semmelcheck Smith?
Correct. I don't see any either.
All right, so with no hands raised, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period, and I apologize for omitting that. We have a motion, but not a second. Is there a second for the Deputy Mayor's motion?
Second, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Povey, seconds. Deputy Mayor Robertson, would you like to address your motion?
I want to thank the staff and everybody who's been involved in making virtual meetings possible, and for the members of the public who have continued to participate, and even in greater numbers in many cases throughout the pandemic. Look forward to seeing you all in person. Thanks.
Councilmember McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Roberts for pulling this off of consent, because I believe that, because it's the first time first time on the agenda and we're coming to a vote, it is important for me, at least, that we do have a discussion, so the public is aware of the move scheduled for June 6th to go back into the city chambers. I am glad we're gonna do that, but I particularly have several reasons why I'm going to participate in the hybrid model, which is zooming for both council members who want to zoom in and also for the public. So it's actually my notice to tell the public that you can please continue to participate as fully as you have been during the pandemic, because we actually have all comment that we have noticed that's much more public participation. I particularly am of the medical group that I am boosted not once, but twice. And that makes me a vulnerable population, and in addition to that, I also am the sole caregiver for a one-year-old who is not vaccinated, and then another grandchild in that immediate family who cannot be vaccinated because of their age. So we've already stumbled upon some quarantine, and when that happens, I can't show up for a week or more until we're sure that no one's going to be infecting each other. So as everybody knows out there, this is a very, very, you know, century, once-in-a-century situation. I will be taking my cues as things change, as my comfort level changes, et cetera. I really do miss being in the council chambers, because we have so many new people, and it is a great opportunity to have a lot more dialogue prior to and after meetings. So I'm very sad to say that, at least for a little short period, I will be zooming in, and I hope that the staff will be able to get the bugs out of that system. Again, thank you, Councilmember Roberts, for pulling that off agenda, so that the public knows what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other questions or comments, Councilmember Roberts?
No, thank you. I just have a couple of questions about where what the public in the council is going to expect when we come back to chambers. It was mentioned sort of the technology and the that the public and council members are going to still be allowed to and encouraged to participate. Sort of some of the specific questions I have are around, is in the past, I mean, we've had seating in the council chamber for, I would say roughly 100 people. Is that going to, is that capacity going to be similar to what we've had in the past? Also, I know that some of the details have not been finalized, but are there going to be still the same requirements about around when public who chooses to participate remotely or virtually, are they, that's still the same time period to sign up to give public comment? Is that going to be still the case? And to the extent that some of these, I know, again, I know some of these details are still to be worked out, but to the extent that staff can provide some answers to those questions about what to expect, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. I will answer those things that I might know. We have not discussed a capacity limit for in the council chambers. I think as council, it's probably pretty familiar. It was very unusual circumstances when it might have gotten to that capacity. We would like to spread the chairs a little bit further apart to allow that. And I know historically, when we have had a larger crowd that couldn't, that overflowed the number of seats in the council chambers, we've also allowed or provided the speakers out in the lobby and additional seating out there as an opportunity. Certainly by providing the opportunity for people to continue to participate virtually, like has been happening for the last two and a half years, you know, that hopefully will be very convenient for people. So people that choose to participate virtually, really nothing will change for them. I would anticipate that we would still ask for the same signup timeframes, just so we can coordinate that. Certainly, if that's gonna change, we would let the, you know, public know that in plenty of time. And I know earlier today, I think, when I talked with Councilmember Robertson, he asked a question about COVID protocols and masks wearing. I think as I've talked with council members and currently at City Hall, you know, when the mask mandate was dropped on a statewide basis, we also do not require masks be worn by those coming into City Hall. We encourage people to do that. But we would anticipate, at least at this time, that that would still be the practice within the council chambers itself. So, and with the new technology, we would hope that people would be able to, you know, experience the meeting well, both virtually and in person. And that is what we are striving for. So if there's any other specifics, we can try to answer those, or we can follow up later with additional information. One more thing I would say is, I think I had shared with council, our staff have been working very hard on this, and so they just did a final testing last week to make sure that we felt comfortable that we could move forward technologically, and we would be providing additional information to council as far as anything that you should be aware of this week with the next meeting, two weeks from tonight on June 6th, so.
Are there questions, Councilmember Roberts?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark?
My apologies. I must not understand this clearly. So does this resolution for the Parks Board, the Planning Commission, and the City Council indicate that it is mandatory that all of the people who are on those commissions or the council appear in person unless there is a state of emergency that says we cannot safely come?
Ms. King?
No. What it does is before the resolution mandated that they only be virtual and that everybody had, that no one could come into a meeting. And so what this would do is undo that mandate, that everything be fully virtual. And then it allows, like Councilmember McConnell pointed out, some hybrid form, which can allow members of the commission or of the Parks Board to attend remotely as well as in person, as well as the public to do so. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Would there be a specific protocol that would need to be followed? For instance, if the Parks Board member didn't feel comfortable coming to one meeting, but did feel more comfortable coming to the other, would they be able to just, would they have the link and be able to zoom in or appear in person, and it's not requiring a specific communication, or is that someone would have to be handled ahead of time?
That I'm gonna have to defer to the technological people, but I would say that as far as attending remotely, we've done that prior to COVID-19, and that if a particular member could not attend in person, they can, they could call in by phone. We had that technology. So I think it's going to be just a matter of how you access the new technology, and I'll have to defer to other people that are much more up to date on the technology.
Right. Ms. Semmelcheck Smith?
Yes, so the council chambers has had the hybrid equipment installed, and our other conference rooms are on the schedule to be installed. Currently, we've been battling backorder of critical equipment. Room 303, which the Park Board typically meets in, that room should be installed soon if we get the equipment on the timeline that they last gave us.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I'd add that as a council, we considered sort of how we were gonna implement this during our retreat. And we considered various policing mechanisms, you know, and we ultimately decided we didn't want to do that. The council members are free to decide for themselves whether and how often they choose to participate remotely, and I believe that is going to extend to the boards and commissions. So under the circumstances, what we're doing is we're proposing a hybrid model where it's totally optional, how you participate. And obviously, we'll take that as it goes, and if it turns out that something isn't working, we may have to revisit. But for now, council members are welcome to attend completely remotely for as long as they need to, until they feel comfortable coming in. Are there other questions or comments from council? Ms. Semmelcheck Smith, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Povey.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramsdale.
Aye.
Councilmember Mark.
Aye.
Mayor Scully.
Aye.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
And Councilmember McConnell.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next up is now Action Item 8B, which is a public hearing and discussion on ordinance number 951, which is the extension of the interim regulations beyond those provided in Shoreline Municipal Code due to COVID-19 impacts. Because it's a public hearing and discussion, we're gonna have the staff presentation first, and then the public hearing. And I believe Mr. Bauer will be presenting.
I am promoting I am promoting Mr. Bauer right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right. So um yeah, tonight I'm here to uh present proposed ordinance number 965, which would extend for another six months, the interim regulations for the outdoor seating to provide for ongoing uh flexibility in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And if I can advance the slide here. There we go. Um, so the interim regulations, they were, um, as you recall, first adopted in July of 2020. They've been extended three times. Uh, the latest extension is due to expire June 21st unless actions taken to extend them. Uh, the interim regulations before you tonight would establish uh or continue to establish rather a no fee registration process for the seating areas on private property and then also the expedited permit review for areas in the right of way. They don't change any regulations related to life safety. Staff anticipates this would be the last extension needed as the planning commission just last week had a study session on the draft regulations to allow outdoor seating on private property on a permanent basis. Uh, the planning commission is scheduled to hold a hearing on the permanent regulations at their July 21st meeting and a recommendation to council would be expected following that hearing. So as of today, there's currently two businesses that continue to operate under the uh under the interim regulations. Uh, tonight is the public hearing on the six-month extension and potential action is scheduled to come back to council at your June 6th meeting. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Maria.
Thank you. And since this is a public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing for comment on this agenda item only. Ms. Semmelcheck Smith, has anyone signed up for this particular public hearing?
No one pre-registered for this item.
All right, for the for the folks in the attendee list, if you would like to speak on this agenda item, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And at this point, this is an action item, sorry, this is not an action item, this is a study item, the action item was a public hearing. Are there question items, are there questions or uh discussion from council? Deputy Mayor Robertson?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm really glad that we did this. I I think it was a great response to what was happening in our community during the pandemic. Uh, I'm happy to support another extension and also happy to see that we have some uh permanent recommendation, you know, headed our way soon. Uh, so thank you for your work on this. Um, the one thing I I called out as I was reading again is that um a part of uh part of the ordinance uh suspends minimum off-street parking requirements. So I'm just gonna like just drop this for the future reference, you know, as we continue to focus on making no neighborhoods multimodal, I would be interested in looking further at reducing the minimum requirements for off-street parking for food and drinking establishments. So that's just my little soapbox on this and I look forward to supporting it when it comes back for action. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanna say that this is a great idea. I am a little disappointed with the lack of participation, but maybe I'm not going to the areas where it's more um viable. But down downtown Edmonds, you could hardly go on the sidewalk because there's more tables at um restaurants that didn't have outdoor seating, you know, even last year or something. So uh, nobody seems to mind that they're eating on the sidewalk, nobody seems to mind that they've uh got less room to walk by. And quite honestly, I I can see what I, I can see what's on the menu by looking at people's tables. So thank you for the staff and the council to be so flexible uh for this sort of thing because eating is one of the, eating and socializing is a great activity that w- we can do a little bit more safely outdoors during um this during this pandemic, which I hope I never have to live through another one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, I'll just add that I remember when this first came up at the very beginning of the pandemic and we talked about various models which we could regulate this and what council sort of unanimously said back then, the the last council was, let's get out of the way and let this happen. Let's make it as easy as possible, as cheap as possible and see what happens. I I too am not disappointed. I'm not even surprised that we haven't had more participation in it. It's just the way our city is structured. And as the city changes, I hope that these regulations become permanent and we start getting businesses start to build around this concept, that we can have something like Edmonds where you can have a public street scene that we all participate in. We've got, we've got parts of that. I mean, North City, Richmond Beach, there's other neighborhoods, Rich- Richcrest, um, there's other neighborhoods where that starts. And I'm hoping we can develop it even further as time goes on and these regulations only encourage it. Councilmember Roberts?
I thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I I I echo your sentiment sentiments um that, but I think that there's optimism in in sort of looking forward with uh certain developments around our light rail stations. I think that there's going to be um. As our previous economic development director really sort of talked about is that get that place-making feel. And that's what uh you have a certain number of businesses, you as Councilman McConnell talked about sort of that sort of vibrancy of the street. Um, that's what brings people to get out, that brings, and one business does it, then two businesses do it, especially if they're located near each other. You start to have that vibrant streetscape where people will come and want to sort of walk and linger linger and say, oh, I'm that that place looks interesting. So I think that I'm very excited about this and and I think when paired with our uh the review of the R M U R 70 regulations that are coming shortly, I think that we have this great opportunity to sort of make Shoreline, you know, especially in our light rail station areas, a very vibrant place. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, uh, when do we see this come back, Mr. Bauer?
Uh, this is scheduled for action on June 6th.
All right, i- is is there, what's council's opinion on a consent? Sorry, can we do a thumbs up on consent? Okay, all right, that looks like unanimous thumbs up. So let's let's go ahead and put it in consent and thank you, Mr. Bauer, for the excellent presentation. Next up is study item 9A, which is a discussion of ordinance number 966, which is amending the Shoreline Municipal Code uh relating to deferred underground facilities. And since my screen isn't working, I don't know the staff member presenting. I apologize.
Mayor, uh, I'll be presenting this item tonight. Uh, John Norris, Assistant City Manager. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, with me tonight as well is uh Trish Yonkey, our city engineer. Um, so she'll can uh answer any questions as well that the council may have. Um, and this is a discussion of ordinance 966, as the mayor mentioned. Um, and you can see the title of the ordinance on our our slide here. Um, just by way of of background, as council recalls, uh, on February 28th, uh, you discussed the required electrical utility uh undergrounding in the South Shoreline uh 148th Light Rail Station area and the challenges that both uh sound transit and members of the development community uh were having with regard to meeting the city's undergrounding code, uh, given the delay in Seattle City Light's Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project, which is an undergrounding project replacing three-phase electrical cable that is currently uh in the ground uh running north, south, up and down Fifth Avenue, northeast. Um, given the delay, uh, sound transit, some private developers expressed to the city and to Seattle City Light, uh, the need for both overhead uh temporary construction, three-phase power uh to construct their large projects and for that overhead interim power to continue to energize um or operationalize their their new developments until that Duck Bank project is complete. Uh, on March 7th, the city council uh adopted ordinance 958, which addressed the first issue. So that was uh and that allowed for temporary construction power in the M U R 70 zone. Uh, and tonight, uh, bringing back ordinance 966 uh to take a look at the second issue there that council discussed on the fe- on February 28th. Uh, in front of coun- so in front of councils night is ordinance 966, uh, which provides for a new section of the municipal code, uh, which is section 1320060. So this is all new uh, all new uh municipal code language in that section. Uh, it allows for interim overhead power within a limited area. Uh, if a property owner who would need that uh power to operationalize their property uh enters into what we're calling a deferred underground facilities agreement or a D U F A for short because everything needs an acronym. So that's the acronym we've chosen. Uh, the D U F A would be good for five years um from the date of the issuance of the development permits for a development project uh or or for projects that have already been issued uh development permits, such as the Sound Transit project, the five-year timeframe would start upon the potential adoption of this code section if council does approve this, uh, which is currently scheduled for June 6th uh with two weeks from now. Now, the code will also allow for uh one uh one-to-year extension uh if through no fault of the applicant, Seattle City Light, uh, this undergrounding project is not complete within that time, uh, five-year timeframe. Um, and the applicant uh requesting the D U F A would need to design and construct uh underground electric electrical utility infrastructure, uh, which is typically an underground vault that would go on their property or potentially in city right-of-way uh to make for that future connection. So that would have to be agreed to in the D U F A that they would uh construct that as part of their development project uh so that that future underground connection can be made. And they would also need to initiate a permit in the future if Seattle City Light doesn't do this automatically to make sure that Seattle City Light then connects their um uh their fifth uh the Fifth Avenue Duck Bank Underground Project to their development in the future. So we want to make sure that the development is ready for that underground connection and that the connection is made in the future. Um, this is the map of the proposed D U F A designated area. And so it is the area outlined in the orange uh triangular shape there. The reason why this uh initial designated area was selected is this is basically the rough outline of where the first 10 blocks of the Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project will serve. Uh, so it doesn't serve obviously the entire east east area, if you will, of the um 148th Station area. Um, as council may recall, there is uh overhead three-phase power running north and south, up and down Eighth Avenue. And so any development in uh the eastern portion of uh the Light Rail Station area out to the east of that orange line uh would likely be served uh through a connection via Eighth Avenue. Seattle City Light would determine where that connection would be. Um, but this is why um this initial designated area was selected. Um, obviously, the designated area could be expanded if it if there was a need to do that. But what uh on the February 28th, I think Stafford from council desired to keep this um, keep these regulations kind of as tight as possible. And so uh identifying the designated area around where that uh Fifth Avenue Duck Bank project will serve was what was selected uh for your consideration tonight. Um, and so finally, ordinance 966 also has a component for requirements of the electrical utility service provider uh in the city, which of course is Seattle City Light. Um, it would require them to coordinate and perform work uh for these interim overhead facilities. This includes appropriate design and construction of the interim power poles. So we do not want those poles and wires to, if once installed, to preclude any future development. So we want to make sure the setbacks, uh, the height of those poles and wires, uh, there are specific setbacks needed. Uh, Seattle City Light has requirements for setbacks from their infrastructure. Want to make sure that isn't precluding any future uh, and so there's a requirement that um they are designed in that way on the utility. Also a requirement for timely removal of the interim overhead poles from City Light once the Duck Bank is completed. And the code also provides for enforcement provisions against City Light if they fail to comply with this code. And again, we um have been um uh sharing this information with with key stakeholders. Uh, you can see the stakeholders there, including Seattle City Light. Um, this has been a fairly complicated issue, at least complicated for for myself. Um, there are a lot of intricacies to it and we, at the staff level, did not want to create any unintended consequences so that, you know, in the future, uh, a stakeholder couldn't meet the code requirements. So that was helpful to receive feedback. Um, some of that feedback was incorporated into the proposed code that's in front of council tonight. Um, as well uh as I, as hopefully council is aware, uh, did provide an additional memo to council today. We did receive some additional feedback um this or last week after the staff report was issued. Um, and I'm happy to provide um any questions or answer any questions council may have about that. But staff uh in that memo did propose kind of a friendly amendment, if you will, to what uh is in proposed ordinance 966, which is in the council packet, um, given the intricacies of pole removal. And so it's not just Seattle City Light that is removing their poles. Uh, in most cases, there are also telecommunications companies that are hanging their wires, so to speak, uh, or attaching their wires to Seattle City Light poles. And as part of the removal process, those telecommunications or fiber optic or cable companies are doing that removal. And so uh the feedback received from City Light is we want to make sure to provide enough time for all of that work to happen so the uh so that those interim poles, again, once the undergrounding project is complete, can be removed um in a timely way while we're still able in our code to kind of hold accountable City Light to make sure that that work is accomplished. And so no action is required tonight uh with regard to a recommendation from staff. Uh, this is an opportunity for council to ask any questions uh of staff regarding this, provide any feedback. Um, staff does recommend adoption of ordinance 966 when this is brought back to council for potential action on June 6th. Uh, again, with those staff recommended amendments, as I just mentioned, and I do have those on a slide. I'm ha- happy to pull that up if council has any specific questions about that. With that, Mayor, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Roberts?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple questions and then I have a question about the proposed amendment. Um, the first question is, uh, in your D U F A, is that how we're describing this?
Sure.
Uh, it includes some M U R 45 zone. In the ordinance that was adopted earlier this year, we limited undergra- um, sort of temporary underground or o- overhead wires to M U R 70. Do we need to go back and revisit that ordinance to include M U R 45 or make it even tighter and say that develop sort of this D U F A language for that ordinance as well?
Uh, great question, Councilmember. And staff did have this discussion about reconciling uh the allowance for temporary construction power poles in the right-of-way, which is only in the M U R 70, as as you rightly point out. Um, we, it is most likely that um uh an agency or a developer, Sound Transit, applying for a D U F A would likely uh uh take a a an interim power pole that would be allowed and then utilize that on an operational basis. Um, so that would, again, those temporary construction power poles are only allowed the M U R 70. So council could go back and, we did not bring this forward as part of this ordinance, expand into the M U R uh 45, as you mentioned, that allowance for um uh temporary construction power poles. It is possible that um there may be a need or there, you know, there there could be a time at which um there's a need for an interim interim power that wasn't constructed off of a a temporary um, a temporary power pole. Um, you could also scale back uh, you know, the uh the designated D U F A area, as you mentioned, kind of make that orange, orange area a little tighter. Um, I think there may be some proposed development in that M U R 45 uh zone in the future. And so that may then preclude them from, again, utilizing this until that Fifth Avenue Duck Bank uh project is complete. They would have to then underground from Eighth Avenue and um, as we heard from members of the development community, that may be a challenge for them to then uh in- incorporate that cost into their development projects. But that, so all of those are options for council. Um, we felt like having an inconsistency at at the outset isn't necessarily a problem. Um, it may be that council, and I guess from staff's recommendation, uh, our recommendation initially on the temporary construction poles was not to limit it just to the M U R 70 area or M U R 70 zone. And so um, you could go back and and fix that in the future. you could go back and fix that in the future. But I think
We're not adopting the DUFa zone itself. We are just saying that there is zones created.
That's correct. That's correct. So the way that it, the code, as currently proposed, allows for the director, which is the Director of Public Works, to identify what that zone is. The map that was included was so council's aware of what staff's intention would be as an initial, initial map. And it wouldn't be staff's intention to just expand the map. We would do that very judiciously. I'm sure we would share with council before there was any any change to that. So it, right, it doesn't impact the code itself.
Okay. My second question is around the these temporary poles. I know normally Seattle City Light is renting their space to a variety of different utilities, most notably cable, but or at least today cable, but previously I know it was telephone wires and the like, and probably still is. My, the question is there's nothing in our code that prohibits Seattle City Light from renting temporary poles for these projects. Do we have the sense from Seattle City Light that they are planning to rent those poles for these processes?
Yeah, because some of these poles may replace existing single-phase poles. I think it is likely that, that the telecom or fiber optic pole attachers, that is kind of the term we've used. So those other companies that are attaching to Seattle City Lights poles very well may be on these interim poles. You know, in speaking with our Economic Development Program Manager, this code, again, allows for operational power for future development projects. And it is likely that fiber optic or telecom providers very well may want, that may be the easiest connection in the interim, is to use these interim poles to connect to those future development projects until, again, the Duck Bank Project is complete. And so we don't quite know exactly what the future would hold, but it's our, our sense that it's likely that these poles would have those third parties attached to them.
Okay, thank you. My last question is about the specific amendment. And this in the D2B, both in the amendment and in the sort of original draft, it talks about two different things. You have the completed capital project, and then you have the connection. There seems like there could be some difference of when the connection can occur before the project's complete. I mean, at least in theory, is there might be other work that has to be done after the connection is done. So I'm wondering if there needs to be some clarity about which, what is the time point the clock starts? Whether it's the actual connection or is it the completion of the project? And so I'm just, I don't know if there it may, I'm wondering if it needs to be cleaned up before it's adopted, is my, is my comment at this point.
Mayor, if I can respond to that. Yeah, great point. Definitely. I know it gets a little wordy here in terms of what, what we are proposing. I think the intent was, and we can definitely take a look at, to make sure we're not using different terms for the same meaning. I think the point is, once that the underground project is energized and those, and so I guess that would be kind of when it's, the connection is made. They can then stop using those overhead facilities to energize whatever future development project, the Sound Transit project, or, you know, the AAA management apartment building project that's under permitting now. And that, at that point, the wires that are on the interim overhead poles can be removed from Seattle, by Seattle City Light. That would be the first step, is that they would go in and remove the wires and transformers and other facilities, is our understanding of what the sequencing is. Then typically, the, any attachers, so any of the telecommunications companies, cable companies and like, would go and sequentially remove all of their wires. And then Seattle City Light, as the pole owner, would come in and finally remove the pole. So yeah, if there is, we can definitely take a look if there's cleanup needed in terms of if we're using both construction and connection interchangeably. We don't want that in the code. So it's, there isn't confusion about what the trigger point would be. So we'll date, you know, definitely take a closer look at that. But, yeah, we were, the intent wasn't to have different meanings for those terms. Really, it was once that underground project is energized and the connection to those buildings is how power is now being provided, that's when the overhead wires are, you know, power isn't being provided via overhead, and then all those wires and poles can come out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Popeye.
Thank you, Mayor. I think part of my question has been partially, I said, I think Councilmember Roberts did ask that, but just for clarity's sake. And thank you, Mr. Norris. I always enjoy when we have developers making a lot of investment in our city, and especially not just putting out the infrastructure, but other things, which is necessary to keep our city up and running. And with our experience with Seattle City Light, we don't want any of these errors coming back for us to kind of address again. So just to clarify, you said on point number four on Slide 3, requires developer to install underground infrastructure, and that's not just for construction phase. That is after or during. So I'm wondering, where does that, I mean, when in the process does it take place? Is it before permit? And is it already going to be in the permitting process, just like we have the traffic impact analysis as part of the whole permitting process?
Yeah, the, so the, the DUFa would require that the underground, you know, and I'm just going to use the term vault, because typically it's a, it's a vault or a box, a big metal box that's underground. And that, that is where the, the connection is made between the public underground project, Seattle City Lights project, and then the connection to, let's say, a multifamily development. Generally, and Trish Yonkey, our city engineer is here. And so Trish, I'm gonna not ask you to answer this question, but if I get out on a limb here and don't, don't answer it correctly, please jump in here and correct me. Generally, that work is done as part of the development project. So obviously, the developer needs to make sure that the connection to their building is there. So they're running all of their internal lines on their property and then into, into their development. The DUFa would require that, that underground electrical connection infrastructure, that vault be completed prior to the development being completed. And so we want to make sure that there's an agreement that says that this is going to happen and that the development will be able to basically accept underground power. What we don't want to do is get into a situation where a developer says, well, I'll just do that later, or, and they're not able then to accept underground power when their operational power is going to be served through these overhead wires in this interim basis. So that's the point of that agreement. And we're asking a developer to enter an agreement to say, yes, I will make sure that this is part of my development project. So we want to, it's really an assurance that on the development side, that the development will be ready to make that underground connection. So that's the whole point of part of this agreement between the city and the developers, we're getting an assurance that that, that work is going to be done and that the development will be ready for that connection.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes. And I really enjoy the part that there's going to be an agreement, so people can be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Seeing none, other than the unfortunate acronym, is there any objection to this as amended by staff being put on the consent calendar? Give a thumbs up on that or? All right, Councilmember Roberts is so-so. So let's go ahead and put this on as an action item on the next, next meeting. Mr. Norris, when will it come back?
It's currently scheduled for June 6th, Mayor. So, yep, we can bring it back at that time.
Let's look forward to it as an action item on June 6th. Next up is a discussion of ordinance number 964, which is Planning and Community Development's Staffing Request to Support Increased Development Permit Volume. And I believe Ms. Markle is doing the presentation.
She's joining as a panelist right now.
Hi, Ms. Markle. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Just wait a second for the presentation to pop up. Thank you, Jessica. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate this opportunity to present a plan to you for additional permit staffing. Development has been occurring at an increased and sustained rate since about 2015 in multiple sub areas throughout the city. Not only are the number of places for people to live increasing, but much of this housing is being built green and with 20% of the units being affordable as a requirement to participate in the city's incentive programs. With this, the skill set for staff and the time it takes staff to do review of permits has grown with these requirements and incentives to achieve certified green standards and the adoption of more stringent version of this, versions of the state energy code, which will continue to be amended to reduce consumption by 70% in 2031. Also, stormwater and critical area regulations are mature to become more complex to administer as well. So I say all this to, it's at stage that the combination of the increased volume of permit applications, which is is representative of the success of the, the planning that councils have done in the areas to create transit-oriented development and the increased complexity of the reviews and inspection, along with other factors that are noted in the staff report. It's now a challenge and it's begun to exceed the city's ability to provide predictable and timely reviews and permit issuance. So now we're seeking a budget amendment to hire additional staff to provide permitting services. The additional requested staff are expected to bring our round of first reviews back to within the 2019 averages, which are shown in the staff report. So the proposal is for 6.5 full-time equivalent employees. The two development engineers, traffic engineer, senior planner, permit technician, and administrative assistant two would be working almost exclusively on permit processing. The addition of these reviewers would allow for the creation of what we're calling a fifth group to provide reviews to process largely the new buildings. The traffic engineer two will provide, would provide support to permitting for new buildings and major remodels, as well as a variety of other development projects. Currently, the traffic review can become a bottleneck in the process due to the resource being really spread thin over a lot of divisions throughout the city. The administrative assistant is intended to provide overall support for permitting tasks such as project noticing, applicant registration, processing of revisions, et cetera, with the idea that this would relieve the group reviewers from having to perform some of these tasks, creating more time for them to complete reviews, thereby reducing turnaround time for permits. We are also requesting the ability to increase an existing GIS position from a .5 FTE to a full-time employee. I believe the .5 is already approved, and this would just make it into a one full-time employee. And this request comes from Administrative Services. All the city's functional plans will need to be updated in the next couple of years, and all require GIS resources. The budgets to complete these updates of the plans include or will include money for GIS assistance. The idea here is to combine the resources that have or will be allocated to GIS support for the functional plans and instead combine those resources to fund the other half of the GIS technician. We estimate the approval of this request could reduce permit turnaround time by about 20%, if not more. We are making the request in advance of the 23, 24 biennial budget to buy time to recruit and train the requested staff. Approval to hire these staff positions will certainly reduce permit review timelines, but it's not necessarily the end-all be-all to achieve what our customers are looking for for turnaround time. So we may need to request additional permitting staff in a future budget cycle. And I wanted to take a minute and point this out. I'm sorry, there was an error in your staff report. The slide corrects that information. I neglected to carry over the costs that are proposed to be paid for from the wastewater utility to the total cost column. So this shows you what should have been in your staff report. I'm sorry about that. So, but that, this slide is about how we propose that this could all be paid for, this request. The proposal would largely be paid for by permit revenue from increased sustained permit activity. A one-time contribution from the general fund balance to offset deep green and affordable housing incentives, which waive things like permit fees. A small percentage would be covered by the wastewater utility, because we do, we would be doing wastewater reviews with the development engineer position, as well as our current wastewater review specialist. And we also, as I explained, looking to use project budgets for the plan updates to fund the GIS position. Based on the fact that 92% of the projected permit revenue has already been collected as of the beginning of May for the biennium, we feel confident that, in recommending that these positions can be funded almost entirely by permit revenue into the foreseeable future. And there's information, of course, in your staff report that, that explains that a little further. And I'll just put the recommendation up for now, but this item could be brought back to the council if desired on July 25th. Thank you very much for your consideration of this request. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilmember Popeye.
Thank you so much. I was happy she, you surprised me because I did the numbers and it wasn't enough. And then I saw the slide and it changed. So, surprise. All right, okay. I was just wondering, yes, now we have possibly enough revenue coming in for funding. So I was thinking of revenue source, of course, but then to fund all these positions. How about a projection in the future? Can we see some forecast and in case revenue for permits reduces? What is the backup? How are we going to sustain all these FTEs?
Mayor, would you like me to respond, or is that just a request for future?
I would appreciate a response. I'm not sure what Councilmember Popeye was looking for.
You said you would. I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Yes, please. Yeah.
We will be doing projections for the biennial budget. And as part of what we looked at for this staff report were all the different projects that were in the pipeline. And we have like 7,000 units that are very, how should I put it? Nothing's ever a done deal, but these permits have gone a long way and been in production for a good long while. Property has been purchased, options have been purchased. We've been tracking them for quite some time. And our feeling is that through 2025, when the station opens, that these projects will, are, are very very definite. And then we also have indications from pre-application meetings of future projects that are in the works. And that shows what's going to happen most likely past 2025. Of course, it gets a little murky the further you go out, and there are many variables in between. For, with regard to the level of development that we're seeing currently and through 2025, we can expect the revenue to remain at, I would say, the $7 million plus per biennium that we currently have and had, I believe, last year or last biennium as well. All very general at this point.
Anything further, Councilmember?
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable if we have data showing projections, just for planning purposes. Thank you.
Ms. Terry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, what I will add is, as I've worked with our budget staff, I'm looking at this proposal. We've also been in the process of updating our 10-year forecast. And we believe that based on the that based on the projections that Ms. Markle discussed, that we would be able to sustain the funding for these positions through the next two bienniums, for the next four years. And obviously, it gets a little bit more difficult after that, but again, these are positions funded by development revenue. Not that anybody wants to be in this position, but if we were to start to see a sudden decline in the future, then we would have to address that from a staffing perspective. The other piece I would say is that, you know, we get the revenue upfront, or a large part of it, and then there's still much review time. So even a lot of the revenue that we're seeing this biennium will really cover work that's going to be happening, you know, through the beginning of the next biennium. So I don't think that we could guarantee anything beyond the next two bienniums, you know, for sure, because things can change. But I think we also recognize that this is work that is tied to a specific revenue source, and will continue to have to monitor what that workload is. And if things were to have a significant change, then we would have to make personnel adjustments.
Thank you, Ms. Terry.
Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramsdale, throw his hand.
You did. Yeah, so we'll go back to him.
Okay. I definitely do support this, and I appreciate the staff recommendation that if the council's supportive, they'll start the hiring process now, and with an ordinance to follow. Obviously, you can't hire anyone without the ordinance, but at least we can start the process of getting applications in and the like. But I think what I really like about this is that, from 2019 to 2020, 21, for additions, remodels for single-family residential, I mean, that time almost doubled during a couple-year period. I mean, it's good that there's a lot of activity, but when you are trying to remodel, I know, if you have to wait, just double, I mean, every week waiting for a permit is sort of, feels like a very lengthy time, and to see that double amount of time is difficult. So I hope that this proposal will sort of address not only sort of the multifamily waits, but also those additional remodels that sort of mid-tier, they're not quite over the counter, but they're not, they're often much simpler permits than building a new facility. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are going to echo Councilmember Roberts. I was pleased, very delighted to see this request come through. I do think our staff, planning staff, has been stretched too thin. I think those wait times are far, far too long, and I look forward to, you know, not just supporting this, but seeing those numbers come down across the board, not just for the big developments, but for the single-family homes, as Councilmember Roberts said. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to reiterate Councilmember Roberts' comment regarding remodels for single-family homes, because I'm actually going through it right now. We submitted a permit, we're going to be submitting a permit for a 12-by-12 deck, and we were told that it would be 17 weeks before the permit would be approved. And so we were really looking forward to having a deck this summer. So please, hire staff as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan, I apologize for the hide-and-seek-with-the-hand thing we were working at cross purposes.
No problem. I would like to echo my colleagues' comments. I completely agree on the planning commission, planning commission, the planning department ads. I am really encouraged that with the amount of the green building, and I appreciate that does take longer to get done and want to see it done correctly. But Director Markle, if I could get you to put back up your slide that shows the positions, please, it would make it easier for me to ask my more specific question. The GIS person, I know how important they are in all aspects to the city, so again, I do not question that. I can appreciate how it's needed. I share, you know, concerns about the future, but for these positions, it seems very logical that they are required. And I can understand that the traffic engineer may be, it would be in high demand, and there seems to be lots of work for traffic engineers in this city of Shoreline. But I'm not clear on the development review engineers. We've just, in 2021, the city council added quite significantly to the number of people that were in the Department of Public Works, and I'm not quite clear, some of them were associated with wastewater utility. So I'd just like to have a little bit better understanding, please, if you could elaborate a little bit more on what those people are doing that speeds up the permit approval process, please.
Mayor, if I may, I'd be glad to answer that question.
Yeah, please.
And Tricia Yonkey, I think, is still here, if anything needs to be added. The development review engineers are really part of the permitting process, first and foremost. They're not part of general public works capital programs or utilities, per se. They support permitting. They are just like a planner. They are just like a plans examiner. Those five groups that do permitting, we can't issue the permits without, most of those new buildings, without a development review engineer doing their part. They do the site development permits. They do the connections between the right-of-way and the building itself. So they're very much so dedicated to permitting. And they haven't had an increase in the number, we haven't had an increase in the number of development review engineers in a few years. I don't know when the last one was added, but there are three of those currently, three development review engineers. And really, if we make one of the new, if we make a line for permitting review that isn't equal, if we didn't have all five teams be equal, it would create another bottleneck, because we'd be funneling in five people's worth of work into a three-person team, and they need to be equivalent in order to not create bottlenecks. Does that help answer the question?
It does. I really appreciate it. The one aspect, though, that I'm not, I don't understand is the additional positions that were added in 2021. And Ms. Yonkey, you may be in a better position to answer that. Do they have no relationship at all to permitting?
So, and you're referring specifically to the new positions that were added for the wastewater utility?
Yes, ma'am, in 2021.
Yeah, yeah. In the 21 budget effective 2022, that we've just finished hiring or getting close to finish hiring on.
Yes.
Only one of those positions has a tertiary support for development review. One of the E2 positions was geared towards helping on operational sign. They could provide some support, not really support, but they will be a resource for development review when it comes to understanding the system. Those positions were more in line of reducing our reliance on a consultant as well. We're currently, our wastewater specialist that does do permit review does rely on the consultant for understanding how the system works, where there are capacity issues, things like that. In the future, that would go towards one of those FTEs instead of to the consultants. But in general, those new positions do not provide significant development review support.
Thank you. You know, one of the concerns I think that we all have is, we want the city to function efficiently, but we don't want to build something so big that we can't sustain it and force difficult decisions in the future. And none of us know what the future is. And so I want to be very cautious in making sure that we're only putting people on that we really, truly need to solve problems that we see for the foreseeable future at this time. So, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from staff or from council? All right, well, I'll just add, I appreciate the desire to not hire people we can't retain. I mean, that is, of course, a goal, and we want to provide a good job for everybody, and we want not to have inconsistencies. But our customer base, the people we are answerable to, are citizens and the folks who are applying for permits. And right now, for a variety of reasons, we're in a boom time. And I have heard so many times, in the limited spectrum I've been sort of out and about post-pandemic, so many times, folks have told me, we can't get permits done. And that's coming from business, that's coming from homeowners. I'm hearing that more than I am stuff about sidewalks and trees, which in Shoreline means it's the forefront issue. And I want to fix that. And I don't want to hire somebody and then 18 months down the road say, I'm sorry, we don't have a job. But as long as we're honest and open about that, for me, that concern to provide consistency and employment is way less than the need to provide expedited permit returns or even average permit returns, because my sense is at the moment, we're falling behind on a lot of things. And I've heard a lot of frustration from folks who are trying to get stuff done, not only in our sort of high-density areas, but just in regular areas, that I don't, I mean, I support this, and I hope it's sustainable, but if we come back in 18 months and the construction climate has changed, that's a sacrifice I'm personally willing to make, because I think there is a defined need right now. I've heard some dissent on the behalf of council, so unless someone wants to raise their hand and suggest otherwise, I think this should come back as an action item. Is there anyone who would like to propose it as a consent item? Okay, so Ms. Markle, when will we see this as an action item?
Suggested was July 25.
All right. Ms. Terry, did you have something to add?
I was just going to reiterate what Councilmember Roberts had said, and was in the staff report. We will move forward with starting the hiring process. We anticipate the ordinance would come back before we actually hired any individuals, but I just wanted to make sure that council was comfortable with that process.
Is there any objection to Ms. Terry proceeding with hiring? All right, that's a bit car before the horse, but my understanding is you won't make a final offer unless the funding is in place. Is that accurate? Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments on this action item or study item? All right, seeing none, that brings us to the last study item, which is discussion of ordinance number 967, which is authorizing the use of eminent domain for acquisition of certain real property. And I think it's Ms. King who's presenting.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. You have ordinance 967, discussion on authorizing the use of eminent domain.
I apologize. Ms. King, I apologize. And I knew about this, and again, I
That's okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Connell, go ahead.
Thank you. I thought, I'm just going to start buttoning, because I want to get offline. I wanted to let the public know, and of course, the council already knows, that I will continue to recuse myself from this topic and further discussion. There were at least one executive sessions regarding that, and I never was at those either. So I'm going to sign off and wish you all a good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Connell. Councilmember Connell lives on the street in question and has chosen to recuse herself. Have a good night, Councilmember.
Good night.
And Ms. King, I apologize. Please go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. I forgot to give her the opportunity. Excuse me. What you have here is ordinance 967 discussing the authorization of the use of eminent domain for the acquisition of second-class tidelands for public park purposes, except for the second-class tidelands associated with the Richmond Beach Saltwater Park. In the city of Shoreline, the Puget Sound Shoreline is in private ownership, and that's primarily ownership of Burlington Northern. Let's see. I'm seeing my clicker. There we go. Oops. Here's a picture of the access points. On the left side is the Richmond Beach Saltwater Park pedestrian bridge, the access to the city-owned tidelands. In the middle is an unauthorized at-grade crossing across the BNSF railroad as well to the BNSF-owned tidelands. And then to the right is Cayouk Cayouk Park, where there's an unauthorized at-grade crossing to, again, BNSF-owned tidelands. This ordinance would authorize the use of eminent domain for the property identified with the star on the screen. As provided in RCW Chapter 8.12, the property that, when acquired, would add land to the city's public park systems, specifically additional second-class tidelands. Of course, just compensation would be paid and provided to the property owner. The city's consultant has reached out to the property owner, and the objective is to negotiate a purchase-and-sale agreement with the property owner. And eminent domain would only be used if those efforts failed after good-faith negotiations are exhausted. We would be following all the statutory requirements with respect to eminent domain as far as valuation offers, and as well as the notice that we are required to provide. This would increase the city-owned tidelands by approximately 2.6 acres. As you can see, it would provide access where the red arrow is, across the public bridge and then up 27th Avenue Northwest. It would connect the city-owned tidelands to the south that are associated with Richmond Beach Saltwater Park, and it responds to the proposed plan survey request to acquire shoreline and beach access. So I think there's no action required tonight. Council is to discuss and provide feedback on the ordinance and whether to authorize the use of eminent domain. The actual action on that issue will be, it's currently scheduled for June 6, 2022. And with that, I am ready for any questions.
All right, this is the study items. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilmember Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mayor, and I won't play hide-and-seek this time. So I'm kind of, I'm wondering about the 27th Ave section that there seems to be some dispute about who owns that street. I've seen some information that indicates that BNSF owns or has a right-of-way for the entirety of that street, and other information says that's not the case, where the Richmond Beach Preservation Society asserts that the street is split in two, where half of it belongs to BNSF and half belongs to the property owners. Do you have any clarification regarding that issue?
I do not have any clarification on that particular issue here tonight. That would be a separate issue that would be separate and apart from the ordinance that's in front of the council tonight, which is solely focused on these particular tidelands, but I can certainly look into that if the council would like me to look into that issue separately.
Further questions or comments, Councilmember?
I would like to have some clarity on that issue. The other question I have is regarding access to the beach. Currently, there's, and one of the comments that I've heard is that there's only, there's really, to get safe access to the beach, you need to use the 27th Ave or Apple Tree Lane to get access to the beach. If that, if the alternatives are, from my understanding, is that you have to go over the railroad and kind of scramble over rocks to get to the beach. Is my understanding correct?
To this particular beach, or to the beach in general?
No, to that particular area of the beach.
If you don't utilize 27, that you have to go over the right-of-way. I will let Ms. Terry address this issue, because she knows the area actually better than I do.
Well, I just wanted to remind council, we've also made application to Burlington Northern for requesting lease access to their right-of-way that would allow people to traverse to this tideland when they're coming from the north. People will be able to access this tideland if they're coming from the south through Saltwater Park. So it depends on where you're coming from, but we do not have an answer yet from Burlington Northern on our lease request, but we have made that application.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for the time being.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to everybody who has provided comments over the last several days. The folks who joined us earlier tonight to, to give their testimony, who are remaining on the call today. I'll just come right out and say that I will be in support of moving forward with the property acquisition of these tidelands, and extending the beach, and extending the ownership that we can. I think this is the first of many steps that it will take to provide safe access. That's really what I'm interested in, is preserving the idea of, and the ability for members of our community, members of this neighborhood, who have been accessing that beach for decades, to continue to be able to do so, but to do so in a safer way than they have historically. Look forward to continued discussion. I imagine this is just the first of many discussions we'll have on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Mork.
I would like to echo Deputy Mayor Robertson's comments. It is, I so appreciate everybody's time to come and talk to us and give us their views and read the ordinance, and, you know, all the input, I think, is, is just wonderful, and I would like to thank everybody involved. One of the things that I wasn't clear on, and perhaps, Ms. King, I, I got confused even with your last answer, some of the commenters pointed out the, that they felt that 27th Avenue should not have car parking that would be allowed as part of this. Is that part of this resolution in any way, or if the council wanted to include that, how would that be done?
Thank you, Councilmember Mork. Now, this, this ordinance before the council simply authorizes the use of eminent domain if we are unsuccessful in negotiating a purchase of the property. As to the issues regarding parking, circulation, unless it would, it doesn't relate to this particular property, so I'm not looking at that issue in this ordinance before the council tonight. The council can certainly direct staff to, as part of this, or in addition to this, to take a look at those issues. I would say that traffic engineer would need to be involved as far as parking issues and other issues like that, but there's right-of-way that can be utilized for parking, and so I don't see it as part of this particular ordinance in relation to authorizing condemnation. But I do understand that there are some concerns and that, you know, you might want staff to look into some issues.
Thank you, that, that's really helpful. The other comment that I heard, that I would be curious on your thoughts on, is they said that, some of the commenters alluded to that the city did not follow a regular process for this. Could you comment about that, please?
The city has followed all of the requirements with respect to moving forward with an ordinance and with respect to exercising eminent domain. We have the process, we utilize the process a lot for roads and for other stormwater infrastructure, access easements, full acquisitions for park property, and so we follow a process very closely that's set out by state law. What I heard is some people wanting there to be more public process and more of a robust discussion within the neighborhood, but that is not a legal requirement. We have met all of the legal requirements, the notice requirements for adoption of this ordinance, should the council choose to go in that direction when it comes up for the council's action.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? All right, well, I'd like to speak for a little longer than I usually do on this, because this is sort of in my neighborhood, and it's a, it's an area that has some importance to me. So I, I moved to Richmond Beach about four years ago, and one of the first things I did is I walked down with my twins, so I think we're five or six at the time, and we crossed the publicly-funded bridge, and we walked along and turned left, walked south along Apple Tree Lane, and said hi to a couple of their school friends who happened to live there, and then there was an older gentleman who lived at the end. I sadly don't remember his name. I, I'm not sure if he's passed on, or if he's simply moved, but he's no longer there. I knew that the beach parcel was his, and so I asked him if it was okay if we walked there, and he said it was fine. And so that became one of our family traditions, as we've heard from so many public commenters, that it's been a tradition over the years and years and years. So you walk down over the publicly-funded bridge, you walk down a street, and I'll talk about the ownership of the street in a minute, but you walk down the street and you get on the beach, and then there's public property, south of the high-water mark, and there's legal distinctions on all that, but, but basically, what's Puget Sound belongs to all of us. Nobody owns it. And if it's Puget Sound, it's covered partly, and then not covered partly, you can walk around there when it's not covered. That particular parcel, the beach parcel, the one that's owned now by Dr. Vitelliano, is accessible by two ways. One is you go down 27th, you get on it. The other is you come north from Saltwater Park, which is, of course, a public park that you are perfectly entitled to walk on, regardless of who you are. And that is accessible at all tide levels except a king tide. So there are these giant high tides where the entirety of that beach parcel is covered. It's kind of impressive, it's amazing, there's water all over it, and it's splashing up onto the tracks, and, but ordinary high tide, you've got beach there, and you've got rocks that you can scramble along. And I did that walk with my 70-something-year-old dad once, and went, oops, sorry, I didn't know, is this high of a tide? But we managed to get there. So you can get there either through going down Apple Tree Lane, or you can get there from Saltwater Park, under all but the most extreme circumstances. And that beach is, as we've heard from so many public comments, used by lots of people. It's a community tradition, it's a tradition for folks outside of the community. So something's changed. And what's that? Well, that particular gentleman no longer lives there, and somebody wants to lock it off. And for me, this is a chance to implement what we've always talked about with public shorelines, and make this truly part of the public domain. We do that by providing fair value. We don't take anything from anybody, we pay full price for it. I am pleased that Dr. Vitelliano has chosen to allow tribal members onto there. If he had chosen to allow all of us on there, we would be in a different position, but that's not where we are. And I don't want to see this community tradition taken away. I want to address a couple of comments that were addressed, or made during public comment on the details of it. There's a police-fire concern. It's a narrow one-lane road, there's no turnaround, no question. There's a bunch of houses down there, and if one of them catches fire, it's going to be a big problem for fire apparatus to get down there. Likewise, if somebody gets in trouble on the beach, it's going to be a problem for fire department or EMS to get down there. This has been used as a public beach for not time immemorial, but certainly for a long time, certainly my lifetime, and lifetimes of many others living in Richmond Beach. So I asked Ms. Terry to pull the police and fire reports from that beach, and that's part of the public comment in the green folder. There's zero. Nobody's called for help there. We're not proposing an expansion here, we're proposing a continuation of what is, what is in existing use. Are there challenges to getting down there? If someone has a medical emergency in one of those houses? Sure. Same challenges as on the beach, same challenges as in a variety of places around Shoreline. Parking, that's a big concern, that's not a new thing, and in all the years that I've gone down there, I will tell you that during the pandemic, when neighbors down there started raising concerns, I stopped going, because I didn't want to intrude on people's space, even though I think I was perfectly entitled to. I chose not to go down there. But I've been there plenty times, I've never seen a car go down and need to turn around. It's just not, it's not a street you want to drive down. Instead, there is a ton of parking up on Richmond Beach Road. There's a ton of parking right up there, it's perfectly safe, it's on the dirt shoulder. We can do better at signage, we can do better at enforcement, if there becomes a problem. But there's not a problem now, and I don't think there's going to be one. Other concerns, such as the seawall, you know, the surveys, those are things that will get sorted out during the course of this process. What we are authorizing is not the final proposal, what we are authorizing is the ability of staff to proceed with acquiring this property through eminent domain if necessary. Couple of the public comments struck me tonight, and I think, you know, were pretty telling. There was a gentleman who was concerned about folks walking their dogs up along that street. I, my window happens to look out in the street, so I started looking out, and I counted no less than 17 people crossing, crossing in front of my house, five of which had dogs. That's part of living in a city. If the concern is they want to live in a private neighborhood, they need to move somewhere else. This is a publicly-funded bridge onto a road which is owned, for the most part, by BNSF. There are concerns about whether BNSF owns down the middle of the street, or just on the left side of the street, on the east side of the street. But if you walk down there, what you'll see is that BNSF has put their no trespassing signs on the extreme edge of that road. So in other words, BNSF is not enforcing their ability to foreclose the public from walking down that paved road. Whether it's on only the left side, or whether you can also walk on the right side, I don't know. That'll get sorted in the survey. But BNSF has chosen to allow folks to walk down there. They could put up no trespassing except for residence signs. They've chosen not to do that, and we're working to clean up even that detail by getting an easement. But at the moment, because BNSF has chosen only to enforce the track side, the public is entitled to walk down that road, across that publicly-funded bridge, to get to this stretch of beach that they have used for some significant time. Because of all these reasons, I am sympathetic to the desire to keep something for yourself, I am sympathetic to the desire not to have folks intruding on your space, but this beach, this is part of something that I think we all should own, and I would encourage us to carry through with this and use eminent domain if necessary to acquire it. Based on my comments, is there anything from staff or council would like to add? Or, in general? All right, seeing nothing, Ms. King, when does this come back before?
I think it's scheduled for your first council meeting in June, which is June, is that June 8th? Is that correct?
Well, looks like 6th, from Councilmember Mork.
Sorry, thank you. June 6th, there it is. It was on my slide, but I don't have my slide up, yes.
No worries, and I was trying to find my calendar, but, all right, so June 6th, this will come back. It, this definitely needs to be an action item unless I hear something from council about consent, I, it has to be action, correct? Yeah, all right, thank you. Anything else from council or staff on this item? And that is our last agenda item, so I believe that concludes this meeting. Thank you, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, council.